Well, everybody, welcome to another episode of Clock Town Chronicles. My name is Michael Herbert, town manager in the town of Ashland. A pleasure to have you listening to what is our fourth episode today. And in Clock Town Chronicles, we spend some time talking about things going on in the town of Ashland, Massachusetts, and get a little bit deeper into some of the issues that you might be talking about at your kids' sports games, or maybe at Erica's, or Honto. But I'm really, really, really excited for today's show and today's episode, because today we have our newest elected select board member, Makita Keegan, as our guest. And Makita, welcome. I can't wait to kind of get into our conversation and talk and learn a little bit more about you, and have our listeners learn a little bit more about you. But I've known Makita for quite a few years now. We've done some work together closely over the last few. And I can just say, it's just been a real pleasure getting to know you, and getting to know about you, and your passions, and everything. And I was just really, really excited when you said that you were going to announce that you were going to run for select board, because I just knew that you would add such an important element and important voice. But Makita, welcome. And yeah, thanks for being on the show. This is great.
Thanks for having me, Michael. It's great to be here.
Yeah, perfect. So I'll just dive right in. You know, being a select board member is a lot of work. It's a volunteer gig. A lot of people, I think, think it's like a paid gig, and it's not.
I want to thank you for pointing that out, Michael. You know, I think we're laughing about it, but one of the things that was kind of shocking to me when I was on the campaign trail, trying to get to know folks, introduce myself to folks in the community, I got a lot of questions about that. It's just like, well, why do you want to do it? You just want to get paid? I'm like, no, this is an unpaid volunteer position that I actually have to run for office.
Yeah, so why do? Why did you want to do it? Why did you want to subject yourself to late meetings every other Wednesday night, and countless other hours of work? What inspired you to run?
Yeah, before I make my first motion to go past 10:00 PM.
The infamous motion.
The infamous motion to do that. Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, Michael, first off, I mean, it's been great being in Ashland. My hubby and I moved here back in 2003, because quite frankly, we wanted to start a family. And he works town over, and we were looking at other towns around, and quite frankly, nothing really had what Ashland had to offer on so many different levels. And so I've volunteered quite a bit in the community in different capacities. And I think part of the reason why I decided to throw my hat in the ring for a select board is because I felt like it was time for me to volunteer a little bit more. We've got a lot of important issues coming up for this community. This community has been through a lot of change since I've been here.
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, 20 years, for sure, absolutely.
Yeah, and I think we're on the precipice of seeing some more changes to come. And the question is, how do we, as a community, as neighbors, approach these changes? How can we make sure that we're doing what's in the best interests of all of us?
Yeah.
And, you know, part of the reason why I ran it is because I wanted to add my voice to that, but also I wanted to make sure that folks who may feel that their voices haven't been heard, get a voice. And one of the things that I was very adamant about when I ran it, and still doing this, is that, you know, I want to see more civic engagement. I want to see more folks get involved in the town, and let their voices be heard. Not only just like let their voices be heard, but actually, you know, get in there and start volunteering, and start creating the kind of community that they want to see.
Right.
You know, so that was a big part of why I wanted to participate at this level, to encourage folks to do that, and just be one of those voices.
Yeah, because, I mean, you look at the trajectory of, I would say, most select board members, not just in Ashland, but in other towns that have that form of government, this form of government. And usually, you have somebody who is a part of the finance committee, or they go, you know, a school committee first, and then make a transition to select board. But you wanted to run for select board. You've got some other board experience, which we'll certainly get into a little bit more. But you mentioned the changes, which I would agree, even in the last 10 years since I've been here, has been very, very significant. So I can imagine what it's been like in the last 20. But, you know, I know this is a difficult question, but what do you think has been the single biggest change that you have seen? Or the one, the change that's probably been the most impactful, or the one that's been the toughest to navigate?
I could give you three different answers on that one.
Okay, or you can choose one.
Yeah, all good, though. I think that one thing that's very obvious, I think, to a lot of folks, is that the town has gotten larger. Like, there are more people in town. There are more people in town, and I think that, you know, folks like, oh, goodness gracious, the traffic. Yes, I will actually add, though, that when I am driving out of town in the morning, I see a lot of Holliston and Hoboken T stickers. So we can't say that the traffic is exclusively a national thing. So I think those towns have been growing too. And in addition to just population size, I think we're seeing a lot more diversity here in town. I think that, and this is where you get in trouble, you start quoting statistics, or making up statistics, and maybe you can fact check me on this, folks in podcast land, but...
We got John Keegan.
Yeah, okay.
He's on CNN.
Oh, right, right on, right on. So from what I understand, just in the schools, like, you know, folks, different backgrounds, looking at the students from different backgrounds, like, just the amount of diversity in our student population has jumped up significantly, even in the past like five or six years. Now I'm going to get a call from Jim Adams telling him, didn't get that right. But that's okay, Jimmy, call me, call me. But it's true, and I think that's a net positive for the town, I think, as well. I think that, you know, we've benefited as a community, having different folks from different backgrounds here, economically, socially, culturally, and then also just, you know, in addition to that, you know, it's been exciting to see folks who have been here for a number of years, and families who have been here for a number of years, sharing some of the traditions, sharing some of the history of the town, making sure that we never forget, you know, some of Ashland's humble beginnings, and we can take some of those values, and some of those lessons learned, and some of those incredible traditions into the future with us as well. And so it's an exciting time to be in Ashland.
Yeah.
And, you know, I think a lot of people are feeling that.
Yeah, I would agree. And I would actually agree with you in terms of like the most significant change. And I think also it's one of the ones that's the toughest to navigate, because I think, what I have seen is this tension between, you know, new people coming in, and kind of those new ideas in cultures and everything. And then, you know, you have the more traditions, you know, Ashland traditions, if you will. And, you know, unfortunately, we do have people that see kind of the differences in those, and sometimes really kind of highlight those and use those as leverage points. But there are a lot of people out there that see it, like you and I do, as an opportunity to grow, not like in terms of size, but grow culturally, and expand kind of our minds, and our values, if you will.
Absolutely. I think it's more than an opportunity. I think it's a strength. I think, you know, we've got traditions, old and new, folks, old and new, you know, we're combining those. I mean, goodness gracious, I mean, you hear so much great stuff about folks from outside of town, about how awesome Ashland is. And I think it's because we've got that great mix, and because, you know, we're taking those differences head on, and we're having community conversations, and we're, you know, and that's the other thing, Michael. You know, I think that, you know, I think there are different ways to sort of approach those sort of differences. And I have to say that, again, I don't want to make it, I don't want to sound too Pollyannaish and say that like, oh, we all get along, and everything's fine. But I have to give credit where credit is due, to a lot of folks in the community, folks who are relatively new to the community, folks who have been in the community, or families have been here from the get-go, making the effort to listen and communicate with each other.
Right.
That is exceptional.
Yeah.
And you love to see it. And more importantly, you want to encourage it, and you want to support it. That's part of the other reason why I'm really excited to be in public life here in Ashland.
Yeah, so, and so, you know, public service is not foreign to you, even though this is, you know, your first term on the select board. You know, you've certainly served in different capacities in Ashland, and in other ways. You know, we've worked on the DEI task force together, you've been on the cable board. Your family is, you get deep roots in public service. But, you know, why don't you tell us a little bit more about your background and your public service work?
Yeah, well, I mean, you kind of covered it there.
Well, I tried to do it succinctly, and not like give everything.
Well, I mean, I think those are some of the highlights, I think, in my mind, you know. But although, maybe on more of a personal, personal level, I think the reason why public service is important to me is because I honestly believe that you want to help create the kind of community you want to see. And the kind of community that I'd like to see is an exciting group of folks who are committed to not just communicating and talking with each other, but rolling up their sleeves and working side by side to make the community a place where we can all be proud of. You know, you mentioned that my family has been deep in public service for many years. And I think growing up, growing up the way I did with my parents, who were both part of the civil rights movement in the 50s and 60s and 70s, you know, those are lived values.
Yeah.
And I don't really think I'd have a choice any other way than to not live my values. And my values center along, again, you know, being an active, positive member of whatever community I identify with, or happen to be in. I'm proud to say that, you know, in Ashland, I've been able to serve on the cable board here, helped to work, get the DEI task force going here in town with Rabbi Eric Jervis and KJ Noriyama. I think we were like the three original folks who rolled up our sleeves and wanted to get started on that. But now we've got a lot of other folks trying to figure out what the next best steps are for that. But just even just volunteering in the community, whether you're doing like Green Up Ashland, whatever, doing like, just being a part of this town. And, you know, it's funny, before we started recording, we had an interesting conversation about, you know, no one on their deathbed has any regrets about, you know...
Wish I'd worked more.
Wish I'd worked more.
Worked on my job more.
And, you know, I don't know about that. Like, I kind of feel like, for this kind of work, and this service work, like, I wonder if I am going to be on my deathbed thinking like, oh, gosh, I could have done more. I could have done more for the community. So I don't know. I think that's just sort of, it's so deeply ingrained, I think, in me. I don't, you know, it just, it means a lot, because I do want, I want to be, like I said, a positive, a net positive.
Positive for the community. And I know exactly what you're talking about, in terms of, you know that, I call it the warm and fuzzies. Like, you know it when, like, you see it and experience it, and the feel, you know, when you're together with the group, and everybody's kind of feeling the same vibes. It's like, you know, we were talking a little bit about music, and playing in a band, or being at a concert. You know it when it clicks. But, you know, the cable board, I mean, you were serving on that for many years. What made you get into that? Because I know you've got like some technology background stuff, but was that kind of the segue into?
Actually, yeah. So getting involved with community access was something I kind of fell into mostly because of my academic work. So academic and professional work, so my day job has to do more with technology. And I started in IT many years ago, as sort of like a full front-end web person, you know, back in the stone ages of the web kids, you know, there was a time.
Netscape Navigator.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Alta vista, Alta vista, baby, for those of you who are there.
Oh, my gosh.
If you know, you know.
Talking about the wayback mission, the web.
If you know, you know. You know, so you'd end up building a server. You'd build the server. You're like a little redhead, you know, you'd grow the wheat, you'd harvest it, you'd mill it, you'd bake the bread. Same thing, you'd build the server, you know, you'd code the website, you'd do the graphics for it, you know, you'd build the online forums, and you'd write the content. And so that, it was a great time to come up, because like for me, you know, being kind of like a generalist in that regard, like, you had a chance to learn a little bit about everything. But one of the big issues when the internet was new, had to do with, you know, who had the right to use the different pipe? Like, who had the right to have certain kinds of internet traffic?
Okay.
You know, and that kind of evolved into that net neutrality piece.
Okay.
You know, so the whole argument back in the day, and there was a big concern about this, because this actually did occur, you know, people were worried, as some of the cable providers, some of the ISPs, some of the internet providers, you know, what if you, let's say, I have cable company X, and I have my own web server, but like, you want to Google, you wanted to use Google. I don't want Google, because that's going to compete with my ad revenue, and that's going to compete. So like, I'm going to, I'm going to just kind of slow down, or maybe block it all the other, or maybe?
Interesting.
And then I'm going to put like my web, you know, Makita's web server, which you all should be using. So, and that's a very simplified example.
So like a Comcast?
Yeah, exactly. I'm not naming names, you know, keeping...
Totally coincidental.
Coincidental. You know, so the worry was that, you know, different ISPs, whether it was Charter, or Comcast, or Verizon, or whomever, you know, could do that with the internet. And that's what the whole net neutrality argument is, like I said, very simplified, was about. And so this was a brand-new public policy area that no one had really kind of discussed. You know, but, I mean, on the other hand, it was really sort of a continuation of, you know, how do we manage networks?
Yeah.
You know, all kinds of networks, you know, in this country, whether they're railroads, whether they are broadcast channels, you know. So when we think of networks, there are different kinds of networks, and there's a long history of us, you know, legislating around those, doing different administrative policies around those at the federal level and such. But nothing really, and this is, you know, nothing really initially for the internet. So the net neutrality issue was of concern. And at that time, the internet was, I think, seen as more, a little bit more open, you know, but we didn't, for some of our younger listeners, you know, the iPhone was not a thing, apps were not a thing, you know, you had your computer, you had your web browsers, it was really kind of the Wild Wild West in some ways. So there was a lot of interest in saying, well, I want to make sure, I want to get the information, and I get it. So how can we ensure that? So that was a policy area that really fascinated me. And so, by extension, telecommunications policy.
Okay.
Something I took an interest in. And so I ended up writing my dissertation about some of the policy dynamics around net neutrality in Congress.
Yeah.
Around that time. But I'd also been involved on a state level, doing some, doing some work around telecommunications policy, having to do with cable, as well as internet. And so being involved in community access was very nicely dovetailed to some of the research that I had been doing around internet.
Yeah.
You know, so, yeah, I mean, we could probably bore your listeners around some of the policy dynamics around broadcast, and...
One of those things that you'd never, never think about, and like, what, you kind of call it like the Wild Wild West at the time, and then, you know, how it interfaces with, you know, an institution like WACA, which has such a deep and meaningful and important public service role.
It does.
Like, you know, it's just one of those things people don't think about until you think about it, right?
It's true. And I think that community access and WACA TV provide a very needed resource, especially nowadays. Because, as you know, local news, you know, whether you're talking about newspapers, especially newspapers, I think, you know, you're just not getting the kind of coverage that you used to. Stations like, resources like, WACA, you know, community access fills that void.
Yeah.
And the amazing thing about it, Michael, is that, I mean, we've got, you know, obviously some great professional folks that work for the station, but a lot of the content at the station, and a lot of what's, again, no one's getting, no one's getting paid for that, you know, no one's getting a salary for that. You know, these are people who want to make sure that our community stays well-informed, and, you know, so you've got that public access piece, and you also have the fact that they televise our government meetings. So any citizen can see exactly what those terrible people on Slackcord are up to at any given time.
Right. They can see for themselves, they don't have to depend on Facebook, or people's interpretations.
That's right.
Right to the source.
Well, they do broadcast live on Facebook.
That's true. That's a good point.
And YouTube as well, so they also, but that's an excellent point. So it's not just on, you know, coming off your cable box, they also make it accessible for the internet. That is such a valuable public service, not to mention all of the things that they do for high school sports, and bringing in all this community-based programming that we did, that they do. You know, I think there's a real danger in a lot of that going away, for various reasons. But it's nice to see that Ashland people appreciate that community resource.
I think very much so.
You know, you can watch it, but you have to understand, you need the context, you know, as well. So I think that goes hand in hand. I think, again, it's a little bit of civics, it's a little bit of media literacy, so you can understand when you see some of those interpretations on social media, you know, what are some of the questions you can ask to ensure that whatever resource you're looking at is a reputable one. I mean, newspapers and TV, whether you're on the right, or the left, or the middle, they all have their bias and their slant, but, you know, more reputable news organizations, no matter what their ideological slant, will always have someone at least fact-checking.
Exactly.
You know, I think, and even growing up pre-internet, you know, I was always taught to read a wide range of newspapers, and I still do. I mean, I have a lot of friends on the right and the left, like, oh, my gosh, why do you read the New York Times all the time? Why do you read the Wall Street Journal? Why do you read? Because it's important to get all of those viewpoints.
Different ones.
And then you can sort of, you know, kind of make up your own mind about, you know, where you stand.
Right, right. And that's a good segue, I think, you know, talking about civics and the importance of that, and the promotion of that. I think it's a good segue into talking about maybe some of the things that you want to do as, you know, as a select board member. Like, you know, what are some of the policy objectives that you have, and some of the initiatives that you'd like to move forward, or things that you'd want to accomplish?
Well, Michael, so this is a part of the podcast that I get in trouble, because I'm going to list off a whole bunch of things that I'm saying I'm going to do, and then, you know, a few years from now, when, you know, I may or may not get all of that done, someone's going to play this tape back and say, oh, Keegan, see, you didn't do it! So I'm not going to remain delightfully uncommittal, but what I'll say, though, in all seriousness, is that there are a couple of broad areas I'd like to work on while I'm at that desk. And one of them, like I said earlier, was more civic engagement, specifically with everyone, but specifically with youth. This is something that I'd like to see, you know, getting back to the civics piece, it's really difficult, I think, as adults sometimes, for us to understand how government works. But it's going to be a lot harder if that's not something that you're exposed to from a young age, you know, understanding that it's your government. One thing that kind of drives me a little batty sometimes, is that, you know, people speak of the government like it's not them, or it's not theirs.
Right, like it's this external force.
Exactly, and especially at the local level. You know, we can get in conversations about the state and federal, but I think at the local level, like, folks need to understand, like, this is, you know, you probably have more control at the local level, at different policy, than you'll ever have at the federal level.
Right.
Ever. So if there are things that you care about, if you care about open space, if you care about affordable housing, if you care about education, if you care about all these things, you know, and you want to see, you know, I think sometimes folks also say like, well, you know, they get involved because they are angry about something. I'd like to see more people be more proactive, and say like, oh, you know, there are a lot of really positive things that we could do, or there's some things that we could make better.
Right.
How can we work together to do that?
Right.
That's the kind of action, community action, I'd like to see.
Yeah.
And I think there's a lot of folks here in town who are already doing this, and I want to actually acknowledge them, and thank them for making those efforts, because thanks to their efforts, Ashland is the kind of community that we're enjoying right now.
Yeah.
But I think that there are so many other folks who may feel a little disenfranchised just generally, who don't feel like they can make a positive difference. And I want to make sure that folks know that they can do that. And I want to make sure that I can provide the information, or pathways for folks to get more involved, to make those sort of positive changes, or improve upon some of the great things that we already have going on town. Economic development is a big issue for me as well, and I think the town has been making incredible strides there. But, you know, I think we need to support all of our businesses. I'm a big fan of small business for a lot of reasons. Local small businesses can really, you know, drive a town, drive the fortunes of a town. You know, I think we, like I said, the town has been doing a lot of great things around that. I would love to see more.
Yeah, small businesses, I mean, they're the ones that support, you know, your local sports teams.
Absolutely.
They're the ones that, you know, I hate to single out a business, because, you know, to single out one, it means you're leaving out some of the others that have done some great work. But, you know, I think of one of our newer businesses, you know, Sub-Zero Ice Cream. And I've just seen them out, you know, in the community, you know, doing different things, helping the kids, you know, showing, you know, their special way of making ice creams and stuff.
It's pretty cool. No pun intended.
Oh, nice one. I see what you did there. But, yeah, and we have a lot of longstanding businesses as well, that have just really helped build this town.
Exactly. I mean, you know, you can shout some of those out, too. And then we've got some of these startups that have launched at or around Corner Spot and Farmer's Market, you know?
Totally.
I'm thinking like Cinty's Kitchen, I'm thinking about like, a whole bunch of other really great local businesses that, you know, folks are getting their start here, Ashland business owners, or people who are conducting business in Ashland. You know, again, I think that the town has been doing a great job. I would love to see more, because I just, I want to make sure that folks understand that Ashland is open for business, you know?
Yeah, and it's important. People need to support those businesses.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I see a lot of talk, and I hear a lot of talk about, oh, we need to bring more businesses, and bring more businesses. And the town certainly plays a role, and can play a role in that, but, you know, at the end of the day, a business for it to stay open, for it, first of all, to move here and make that investment here, they have to feel like they're going to be able to make money and make a living. And, you know, they need to be supported by customers. And so, yeah, I'd love to see some more robust support, just, you know, town-wide. more robust support, just, you know, town-wide, for some of our businesses that do, longstanding ones and new ones that decide to take a chance and, and put in some of their own personal capital.
Absolutely.
Ways to, to make this happen.
Absolutely. Yeah. You know, there are a lot of other issues that I care very deeply about. I think one of the things that folks moved to Ashland for, or appreciate about Ashland, and I just took advantage of some of this, this weekend with my kiddo, you know, is some of our great open space.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
My goodness gracious, like, we've got a town forest. You know, yes, we have our state parks as well. We've got the Hoffman and Ashland State Parks. We've got a town forest. We've got, we've got Warren Woods. We've got so many great, beautiful, natural places.
Yeah.
Here. And you don't have to jump in your car and drive for an hour.
Yeah.
To experience it. You know, you're just, it's just right there.
Right, right in your backyard.
Literally in some people's backyards. But, I mean, what, what an incredible resource that is. I think as a town, we, we definitely want to make sure that we're preserving those resources and improving upon those resources, you know, with all the work on the trails, and the Upper Charles Trail, and Charles Trail. You know, I mean, we, you know, it, Michael, I gotta say, like, you know, I, I've been very fortunate to be able to travel to many different places in the United States, just professionally and otherwise. And, I mean, Ashland's pretty awesome.
Yeah, it's a pretty special place.
It's a pretty special place, you know, for a lot of reasons we talked about, but, but especially with some of that nature, you know.
Yeah, and it's, you know, I'm, you know, obviously, just in my role, you know, I, I make sure that, you know, our, our staff is supported. And, you know, we have a wonderful staff that does some great things. But, you know, some of these open space resources you're talking about, like the town forests, you know, really, really driven kind of by, by volunteers. I mean, DPW provides some support to the Town Forest Committee, but it's really the Town Forest Committee that's doing a ton of work. Same thing with like Warren Woods, you know, really, Carl Hackinson, Greg Wans, you know, you know, and others as well. I don't want to dismiss them, but, you know, they, they basically keep that place maintained. And people, I don't think, understand how much hard work that is. That's a ton of work, like labor.
Yeah, no, like, it's backbreaking work. Like, anyone who's ever been a member of, or has participated in the AMC, or like, you know, long trail sort of, like, it's that. That's what it is. It's, it's, and getting back, we make almost like a full circle back to volunteerism. Like, this town is powered by volunteers. And we're very fortunate to have so many folks who are so active, and I'd like to see more.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
So, Makita, you talked about like traveling and everything a little bit. And, you know, just we're kind of running up on the end of time. But, you know, and I know one of the reasons you travel is to see music. And we were talking, you know, we're both music heads.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I think, you know, it's been great to connect with you on that level. Just, you know, explain to me a little bit the way, or explain to our listeners, I guess, a little bit, you know, the way you explained to me just the importance of music to you. I know this is kind of like off-topic, but I can see some.
No, no, no.
I can definitely see some parallels with local government.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. And, well, first off, like, definitely, music, music is such a key part of my existence. I'm just going to put it out there. I wish I could say that, I wish I could say I was a multi-instrumentalist, and that I sing, and I do not do any of those things, although I am teaching myself a little bit of this, that, and the other thing, and taking some lessons. And maybe in a couple of years, when we come back, I'll be able to say more about.
We'll jam, we'll do, we'll do like a Live at Daryl's House type of show, Jerry. We'll be playing the bass.
Yeah, well, you know, it, it's funny you talk about jamming, because, you know, I think there are a lot of parallels between, you know, music, especially like, being in a band, learning, one of the things that I'm learning to do right now is learning how to listen in an ensemble situation, in a band situation, you know. I think any kind of band, any kind of, any kind of orchestra, like, it's, it's teamwork, Michael. You know, it's learning how, not just to listen, but to pick up and run and innovate with whatever piece, you know, you're doing. I'm thinking specifically of a genre, I'm thinking of jazz specifically.
Yeah.
You know, when you, you've got folks who, you know, you know, someone's playing their interpretation, and then like somebody else comes in, picks that up, you know. So there's a handoff, there's some, there's some innovation, there's continuity.
Yeah.
You know, and I, and I feel like, any kind of, really, any kind of team situation is like that. Learning how to listen, but also pulling your weight, rolling up your sleeves and getting stuff done, and doing it harmoniously, not being afraid to get new folks in, get new ideas in, you know, but, you know, keeping that song something that everyone can, can access and appreciate.
Yeah.
I think there are a lot of similarities between that. It's, I think it's, it's ultimately teamwork.
Yeah.
You know, I can say the same thing about sports, you know, which is why I think, you know, the more kids who are involved in music and sports, the better, as far as I'm concerned, you know, whether you're talking about public life, or going out in a company and being a part of a team that way.
Learn a lot of lessons that way.
Really do. But getting back to the, the non-serious part of that, yeah, music is awesome, and I try to listen to a lot of it. So if folks are listening to the podcast...
Who are you listening to now?
Who am I listening to now? Oh, my gosh.
People, sometimes people ask, well, who's your favorite artist? And I'm like, it really depends, like, because I go through different phases, and I know you do, too. But who are you listening to now?
Yeah, me too. Yeah, I do go through my phases. So let's see, I am listening to, I'm listening to some older stuff. I, I'm listening to the late, great Wayne Shorter, who passed away last year, just one of my favorite musicians of all time. And, and it's funny, because I didn't really appreciate him until maybe about a few years ago, not in a way that I feel like I appreciate him now. I should probably talk about some more contemporary stuff as well. Oh, I really enjoyed Boy Genius, Phoebe Bridgers, and that supergroup.
Okay.
I got a chance to see them last year at an alternative music thing here in Boston. It was great. You know, I'm also listening to some of my older 80s records.
That's totally fine. That's cool.
So.
You know what's really cool? Is when your kid, you know, and mine just turned 15, and I know you've got a younger kid, too, is when they know the 80s music. And you're like, how do you know this? And you're like, you realize, oh, it's timeless. We're listening, we grew up in a timeless period, Makita, music-wise.
Absolutely. Although I will say that, like, I, I, I really enjoy 90s music quite a bit.
Yeah.
I have to say, if you, you know, pick a decade, you know, during your formative years, I'd say like, ah, but there's so much great stuff exploding on the scene in the 90s. I still listen to a lot of that stuff, too. I was actually just listening to some Mary J. Blige on the way over here, actually.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, but yeah, and, and, oh, goodness gracious, that, and I've, speaking of older stuff, I was also listening to Little Soundgarden, too, the other day.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, my goodness. They were just such a great band, but.
Oh, gosh.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Chris Cornell.
Oh.
Just, what an incredible.
Rest his soul. My goodness, what an incredible vocalist. One of the best, in my opinion, like, top five male vocalists, rock vocalists of all time.
I would agree.
Like, those pipes, man.
I would agree.
Incredible. But yeah, I mean, goodness gracious, I've seen, I'm trying to think like, what, who else have I seen? But, yes, but just a lot of, I, hey, I like the pop stuff. I know, watch me lose some votes here. I, I like.
Mike Gangs, I'm telling you, you never know.
I don't know, but like, you know, listening to like, you know, Justin Bieber, and, you know, and all those guys, like, the, the kids on the radio, like Kiss 108 stuff, I know Bieber's a little, little old, but nowadays, but like Jungkook from, you know, and all the K-pop stuff is amazing. It just makes you feel so good. It's really great musicianship, really great vocal talent, entertainment. Those kids are great. I'm kind of digging through like, what is, what is my kid listening to right now? Because we, we listen to it together. And that's a great thing, right? So I, I bore my kiddo with some of my older stuff, and then, you know, turn around, and they're listening, you know, sharing things with me that, you know, I, I'm actually happy to hear, because, oh, Noel, Noel Khan, of course, another great new artist that I'm really into right now. SZA.
SZA, yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, she's great. There's, I think we're, and I know we got to wrap up, but I do think that we're sort of in another really great period, music period. I feel like there's just a lot of great talent, and there's a lot of opportunity to hear that talent live, because everybody's on tour, because that's the only way you can make money as an artist now.
It's changed so much.
We need to talk about that, like, yeah. But, but you can, the upside of that as a consumer, is that you can see your favorite artists a little bit easier than it was before, because they're, you know, that's the only way they can really make money right now. They've got to go out on tour, so.
But, and on the flip side, it's so much easier to like, get your music out there now with like YouTube and stuff. I mean, when I was, you know, a kid, and something I wanted to do professionally, I mean, your hope was, you know, you got like a record, record label that would, you know, be interested in you, and sign you, and you'd cut a record, and, you know, go out on tour and support it. And nowadays, I mean, you can mix it at home and put it out on YouTube, and you got a great, it's just, like you said, the opportunity.
It's amazing.
Exposures is crazy.
I don't know, maybe I'll, I'll practice my instrument, who knows? Maybe we'll be talking about my Sound, my SoundCloud.
Makita, you never know. You never know.
You never know, folks. You never know.
Well, Makita, this has been a great conversation. We always have great conversations. I feel like we've had a couple more indefinite ones since you've been on the board, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. And I will count that, count this as one of those as well. So thank you so much for being with us.
Well, thank you, Michael. And I just want to thank the folks of Ashland, and I'm really looking forward to serving as your newest select board member. You know, reach out, reach out, say hi. I'll be reaching out as well. But if you've got some ideas about how we can, we can do what we do a little bit better, or if you've just got something you want to share, you know, don't be shy. Come say hi.
Yeah, and so your email address is mkeegan@ashlandmass.com.
Yep, yep.
If anybody wants to reach out to you.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, Makita, thank you so much. Yeah, this, this is, again, our fourth episode of Clock Town Chronicles. We'll, we'll wrap it up. And I don't know, Melissa, Melissa Hayes in, in the background here. She's, now she's nodding, she's like, I can't believe you're acknowledging me here. Did you, did we get any, any emails recently on, on our email address, asking any questions? Yeah. If you have any questions, or if you have any suggestions for topics you want to have covered on Clock Town Chronicles, just email us at clocktownchronicles@ashlandmass.com, and we'll be sure to, to read that and pick that up and respond. And, and again, look forward to talking with people and talking about issues that are really relevant to Ashland, Massachusetts today. So, want to thank all of, all of our listeners today, and, actually, not today, but, you know, whoever, anytime you're listening to this, thank you for listening, and thank you for supporting the town and supporting us. And Makita, thank you again. It's been a pleasure.
Thanks, Michael.
All right. So again, Michael Herbert, Town Manager. Look forward to seeing you around at different events, and we'll catch you on the next episode. Thank you.